All right, we live. All right, let's go and kick this meeting off, then. This is going to be a city council meeting. It is August 26, 2025. We're down at the mill and we are also online. Let's, let's start again. Uh, this is gonna be a Lake Stevens City Council meeting and it's August 26, 2025. We're downtown at the mill and we are also online. This will be recorded and later published on our YouTube channel. So with that, I would ask all to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. Uh, looks like we have all the smiling faces, but let's make it official.
Okay, Councilmember Donahue.
Present.
Councilmember Jorstad.
Present.
Councilmember Dotry.
Present.
Councilmember Petershagen.
Present.
Councilmember Ewing.
Present.
Councilmember Hilt.
Here.
Councilmember Shipman.
Here.
All right, great. Could we get an approval of the agenda, Council President?
Absolutely. So it is my understanding we are moving item 10D off of consent and to discussion. So with that amendment, can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You have an agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Let's go to, uh, Guest Business Chief.
Good evening, Council Mayor, fellow department heads and the community. I want to introduce your newest Community Service Officer, Max Vick, who began his public service career in 2017 as an investigations aide with the State Liquor Control and Cannabis Board, doing undercover sting operations for underage liquor cells. Max then went on to serve five years as a cadet with the Snohomish County Sheriff's Office. And most recently, he worked as a private sector before joining the Lake Stevens Police Department on August 18th, 2025. He's been drinking from a fire hose ever since. Uh, he has begun his field training with a Community Service Officer Cooper and will be attending the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Center's Animal Control Academy in the near future. Max is a lifelong resident of Camino Island, enjoys spending time, his free time, doing everything outdoors with his girlfriend Nicole, who's back in the back here too with him. We are glad to have Max as part of our Lake Stevens Police Department. So please welcome Max. And Mayor, if you can come up and swear him in, that would be great.
That's true.
Get to go through this again.
Senator here for me, very great man. Hi, Max Vick.
Hi, Max Vick.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I have supported and defended?
That I have supported and defended.
The constitutional laws?
The constitutional law.
For the United States?
For the United States?
For the United States. And the state of Washington?
The state of Washington.
The ordinance of the city of Lake Stevens?
The ordinance of the city of Lake Stevens.
And the mission and regulations?
The mission and regulations?
Of the Lake Stevens Police Department?
Lake Stevens Police Department?
And that I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
And impartially?
Partially.
Perform the duties?
Perform the duties?
Of the Lake Stevens Police Community Service Officer?
Of the Lake Stevens Police Community Service Officer?
Where is the law?
Where is the law?
That's how we look.
That's how we look.
On what?
All right, so for a little remembrance there, CSO is gonna also take on the, being in the parks, being that park presence also. So it'll be great to have, uh, um, him and Margaret stood up for that, uh, keep an eyeball in, in our parks, so. All right, Shannon, you are the stand-in for Aaron. So let's intro Gus.
So good evening, Council and Mayor. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce our newest member to the Public Works team. This is Gus Baca. Uh, he's joined.
Did I mess it up?
No.
Okay. Um, he's joined us as our inventory control specialist. This is a new position for Public Works. Um, in this role, he'll focus on helping us improve the management and maintenance of our inventory and materials, helping us implement a more robust fleet management plan. And he'll also be helping implement the asset management system inventory module. Um, his work will allow us to be more precise for job costing, forecasting, and strategic purchasing. Uh, Gus brings a diverse skillset and work experience, uh, that he'll be leveraging in this position. He served in the US Army for four years and the Navy for four years. He was a finance manager at a local car dealership and he was a leader at his last organization that specialized in logistics and supply and chain management. He enjoys collaborating with people to standardize and improve processes, leading projects, and finding new ways to be more efficient and effective. He's been a local resident for 21 years and in his spare time, he likes coaching soccer and volunteering at the Monroe School District. Uh, we're really excited to have Gus here in Public Works and the work he's already done since he's been here in his short time has proven very valuable and we're looking forward to see what he does more.
Cool. All right, great. Um, let's move to citizens' comments. Uh, we're gonna go first online. Uh, is there anybody on you who wishes to provide citizens' comments to the council? Who is online?
If there's anyone online that would like to address council, please raise your digital hand and I'll bring you into the meeting. I don't see anyone.
Okay, great. Um, and then, uh, the only green sheet I have is Patricia Johnson. Patricia, if you wanna take the stand and address the council, that'd be wonderful. And we ask you to be around three minutes-ish.
I'll try.
Perfect.
The last place I wanna be is here.
I, I agree with you.
But I feel this is important.
Uh, it is.
And you probably know I wrote you a letter.
Correct.
You've all seen it.
I think, I think a couple of them.
What?
Did we have one or two letters from you?
I just wrote one letter with two subjects, but one wasn't for you.
Okay.
Can we fix her mic? So they can hear her online?
Yeah, let's, let's make sure the mics.
And I, I will apologize. I were hearing aids and I'm very hard of hearing. So if you can't hear me, I'll do my best to speak, I'll speak louder.
Right there. You got the mic.
I, uh, I feel very strongly about banning fireworks within the city limits of Lake Ste- of Lake Stevens. And I wrote a few note, I wrote a lo- letter, long letter to the council and I'm not gonna try to read all of that, but I'll try to recap the important phases of this. And, uh, let's see, where did I start my notes? I s- I was, I'm asking for reconsideration to ban fireworks within the city limits after the advisory vote several years ago was made to continue to allow them. And there are many reasons, but I'm only listing a few of my concerns here. Stress to our citizens, especially the elderly and disabled, as well as to our beloved pets, is beyond reason anymore. When I moved to Lake Stevens in 1999, I didn't live in the city limits and I moved to the city limits in 2015, so I've been here 10 years. And the change I have seen in the displays on the Fourth of New Year's is unimaginable. There's no comparison anymore. And everyone I speak to in my community, I, I live in the points and it's all, and not by, it's by choice, they're mostly elderly, it's not required. And I haven't spoken to one person there that I've known for a long time that doesn't support the way I feel, they hate them. They all have pets, their pets are stressed out, it's horrible. And then damage to homes and other property was, and potential risk of fires, we all know that's a, that's a serious consideration. They used to shoot them off behind me on 85th on the street and I assume the city must have stopped them because they moved inward now, the one community, and they shoot them on their streets inside. And they go on, they never stop. And in today's world, they go to the tulip and they get the, the worst ones. And I recognize an illegal one from a, a legal one. And they never stop on those. And, uh, their own homes are only, they're big houses, they're lovely homes. I don't think there's 10 feet between them, maybe 15, very close together and they're set right off the street. I can't believe they would set all these fireworks off and not put their own homes in jeopardy. The roofs, uh, I used to go when they shot them on the street, I would get their debris in my back, small backyard. They would hit my house with some of them and I had to go out and clean them up the next day. And I'd listen to this till 12:30, I think it used to be 1 o'clock cutoff. I don't remember the dot times though, it's not important. But I s- I s- I made a comment here that my rights should begin, my neighbors' rights should begin where mine, should end where mine start, not to have total disregard for everyone around them.
That's three minutes.
And then a third thing, we read it every, after every one of these holidays, injuries and deaths. Now, we haven't had any here, but we don't, that's a potential. There are 12 cities in the Snohomish County, from the larger cities to some small ones, they've all banned fireworks. And my comment to you in the letter was, I hope to see Lake Stevens on that list in the near future. I really, really do. And, uh, I wrote here, I and my community and beyond have endured this for years and every year it has gotten worse and this, this past year was so bad, I said to myself, no more, I need to speak out. If I don't speak out, nobody, I mean, I don't know if anyone else will and I don't believe anything will ever get done. If I can, at least come and address you and tell you how strongly I feel about this. And I put here as a side note, next year I will be 89 years old. Next Sunday, my dear neighbor will be 96 years old and there are many more like us in our community. I do not represent my community of over 100 homes, but I do know most of them and I feel comfortable saying that for every one of them, they absolutely hate the fireworks. And I know we're not everybody. I know we don't live on the lake where they should be allowed to do what they wanna do, but I'm hoping you can at least reconsider what you did about four years ago to agree to keep them in place. And, uh, if anyone has any questions or anything, I'm perfectly willing to try to answer them.
All right. Uh, we appreciate your words, Patricia, thank you.
I, I can't hear you.
We appreciate your words, thank you for, for.
Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity.
You bet. All right, um, and I don't have anybody else, uh, for citizens' comments, so let's move to council business, council president.
Thank you. Um, okay, I will go ahead and start with myself. I recently attended the Planning Commission meeting where we had a great discussion on step housing code amendments. Um, there were some very thoughtful comments by the commissioners, uh, many different viewpoints on, um, the types of housing and the density of each type of housing. And I expect at some point that will find its way in front of us. Um, it's been a long break, but I believe that's all I have to report, so move on.
All right, so since we've been on break, I've been on several, uh, Community Transit Board Directors meetings. We're talking, uh, a lot about safety on the buses. As you've probably seen in the news, we had another shooting, uh, recently uh, on the Orient Line of, uh, BRT. Uh, nobody goes, was hurt, it was a bunch of juveniles and most of them were caught and are still looking for one. Um, but as you can imagine, it is, uh, very stressful for bus drivers that are trying to maintain safety for the people that ride in their buses. Uh, the things that we have put in place worked pretty good. Uh, we learned some issues that we still need to take care of and, uh, we're trying to do our best at maintaining community transit as a safe place for people to ride the buses. Uh, other than that, uh, there's, we had a skip meeting this morning, or yeah, this morning, wasn't too much talked about on that. Um, and I think that's about all I have.
Thank you. Council Mayor Petershagen?
Well, it's great to be back. Seems like we've been gone a lot longer than a month, but, uh, good to see everybody. Um, attended city legislative reception on the 14th. It was good to see kind of a, um, recap of all the things that the city's done, uh, over the last year and so forth. It's, um, nice to see the folks, uh, from our delegation, their staff and so forth there to receive that. Also attended the Public Works Conference and I wanna give a shout out to our staff. Um, Mayor Gailey, um, Lori Erickson, Alvin, Alvin, Aaron Halverson and, um, Anya. Uh, you're becoming a professional panel. Uh, they gave a presentation, it was very well received on, uh, the, um, process that we went through for accreditation and, uh, there was about 250 people, I think, that were in attendance to that. Uh, a lot of folks came up with questions afterwards and, uh, so hats off to you folks for doing a good job. It was a nice presentation. Um, we're obviously a small entity in the, in the big pond there and it's nice to see the recognition, so, um, good to see. Also, um, we're getting some asphalt down around the city and some new striping and so forth, freshening things up, looks great out there, glad to see that. And then also I'm looking forward to getting some, uh, arms around this motor, electric motorized bike situation. I don't know how many of you folks have almost had one on the front of your car here race recently, but, um, talked to the chief a little bit. I think we're moving forward with some things, but, uh, it'd be interesting to see what the school year brings with those. They are bombing all over the city and, um, unfortunately, you know, I think somebody's gonna get seriously hurt because, uh, you just don't hear them coming. So, uh, hopefully we can get our arms around that issue. So that's it, thank you.
So really quick, I will interject, uh, that came up in our agenda setting meeting that is on our list of things to eventually bring before the council.
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Shipman?
I will kind of piggyback on that and say, one of the good things about that that I've seen with the kids is I, I do see them wearing helmets. Um, I'm sure there are exceptions and they are a little startling, they're kind of like little mosquitoes that come flying around a corner at you. Um, but I am glad to see that the majority of them are wearing helmets. So, you know, looking for that silver lining in a challenging situation. Um, but I, I took this time to unplug, uh, I gotta enjoy our beautiful weather. I mean, seriously, this has been a gorgeous summer. Took advantage of all the beautiful things Lake Stevens has to offer and I wanted to reach out to our employees, our Parks Department. I mean, our parks are just beautifully maintained. I've been all over the city with my dog, you know, playing around in the parks. Actually met our new employee at the new dog park, we were training our dogs together. Um, and the long striping looks great, the crosswalks look wonderful. I mean, that's one of my pet, you know, projects is I wanna make sure those crosswalks are done for schools. Um, we're getting those done, the boat launch work at Cove Park. Um, you guys have got a lot done in these last several weeks and so I just wanted to reach out and acknowledge that and share my appreciation of everything you've done for our beautiful city. This has been a nice break. That's it.
Councilmember Jorstad?
Thank you. Um, mostly just echoing what other folks have said, I also did some unplugging myself, it was nice. It is really great to live in a city where we have pride in our parks and in our public spaces. Um, it's great to see, uh, that the striping and, and the work downtown is, is coming together. It looks beautiful. Um, I'm really glad, Councilmember Petershagen, that you brought up the motorized bikes. I think that's something that, um, I look forward to having further discussion about. I have, um, similar concerns. Um, and yeah, just glad to be back. Um, it's nice to have a break, but looking forward to digging into the budget work that we have ahead of us and, um, some other big decisions here coming, coming this fall and glad to be here, so thanks.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna echo what, uh, Councilmember Petershagen said about, um, when I was at AWC, our panel, um, that we present, our, our staff presented, uh, made people from all over, from all over the state asking how we run a city like we do, what can we do to be more likely? What's it like being a council member, having a mayor and a staff like that? Um, so I really appreciate being in that role instead of being the opposite where people are struggling to work with the mayor, work with the staff, or work with the fellow council. And so just kudos to our staff and along those lines, um, a lot of positive feedback in the dog park. I know I should reach out directly to, uh, Director Garceau about the dog park, but I've talked to people from all over the city that are making their way to the dog park and have really positive feedback about that. Um, so I do wanna just note something, it's already hit social media, but our police department, um, I don't think gets enough credit. Um, and here's just something from a recent incident, uh, that was posted on social media for those that didn't see it. Lake Stevens Police responded to a disorderly mail at a local business. Corporal Shudler immediately contacted the mail and immediately started building rapport. Corporal Shundler spent two hours talking with the subject, getting him some food as he was hungry and listened to what the mail was feeling and dealing with. In the end, the mail asked Corporal Shundler for his contact and took a ride home to his family. Corporal Shundler did an outstanding job. Um, so, um, I also wanna note that I talked to multiple citizens that had law enforcement contact that they did not want, um, but they were overwhelmingly, um, effusive in their praise. One of them was a very prominent member of our community, um, that said he didn't like being pulled over. Um, he said the officer represented the city and the department with, with the utmost professionalism. So I'm grateful to be in a city that, um, has a police staff um, and I'm grateful for our council, the majority of the council that supports that.
Thanks. Uh, I have nothing, but Mayor, we have a good city and we, our staff, that's why we have, in part why we have a good city is our staff, one is competent and they're really good at what they do and they're nice to be around, that's good.
So one thing I forgot to mention, Councilmember Ewing's comments reminded me, I wanna give a shout out to our IT Director and his staff. Um, I had an after-hours IT emergency, I was able to log into the Planning Commission meeting and they were on it, took care of it right away, two of them tag teamed and got me in there where I need to be. So I had a former IT, uh, coworker who said he never got spoken to unless it was something bad. So I just wanna say thank you Troy, you guys did a great job. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Cool. Great, I appreciate everyone's comments. I absolutely agree about our staff, uh, they're killing it, they're doing great work and, uh, good, efficient work. It's kind of a testament, uh, to what we, what we, uh, talked about at, at the, uh, Public Works Conferences that when you go through, um, accreditation, um, processes, whether it's your police department or your Public Works or, or whatever it might be, it, it changes the culture and it changes your systems and your efficiencies and, and you just provide better service for your citizens, which is what we should be doing. So, uh, I appreciate all the words and, um, we'll make sure staff knows, uh, what you all are saying tonight. Um, I took a little advice from, uh, Councilmember Petershagen and I think we're tentatively looking at October 9th to do a little town hall and that time, that will, uh, the theme of that will be the legislative discussion that we had and, and the highlights from the accreditation, just so our citizens can see, um, what we're talking about with, um, with our legislative folks as well as the, um, the, the process of the accreditation, APW accreditation and what it did for the city and how it changed things. So we're looking at, uh, tentatively October 9th for a town hall to do that and then we'll do a Q and A along with that. Oh, 6th. Oh, that's right.
It's day or night?
In the evening. Yeah, we'll do in the evening. That's right, you're right. It is the 6th, I was wrong, it's the 6th. Cool. Um, great, let's move forward then for, um, City Department reports. I assume Dave, you're taking Russ's, oh, Russ is it?
Go ahead, Dave.
Russ, I don't, I'm sorry, Russ, you were sitting right there, I didn't see you. Uh, Russ, you're up.
All right, uh, Russ Wright, Community Development Director for the City of Lake Stevens. So I'm just going to give a, a brief summary of our, um, Q2 report for the council while you've been out. So as always, we remain extremely busy. The thing our team has been really working on is trying to do the implementation phase of our comprehensive plan update for last year. So you've already heard, mentioned that we had the step housing at Planning Commission. We've also been working on, um, assisting parks with the open space element of the park plan. They're gonna be doing the heavy lift, but we'll get it incorporated into our plan. And then our team's starting to work on subarea plan updates. Along with that, the team's working on a variety of different code amendments, everything from our process code amendment, which the council took the, um, temporary action on earlier last year to our critical areas code update. And we're also working on our streets parking and concurrency updates, which we'll be moving on to council for some feedback fairly soon. As well as the step housing, we'll bring that to council fairly soon to hear from them. Um, since as you heard, there's some, uh, different opinions amongst the Planning Commission, which is healthy, but we wanna hear from council before we move forward a lot further on that topic. Um, we do have an annexation, we haven't had one for a couple of years, but we have a small annexation. You'll be hearing more about that later this evening. And then we have a, of a wide variety of special projects that we're working on, including developing a public engagement plan that can be used by all departments and staff when they're preparing, um, slideshows or different types of presentations for the public, continuing to work through our lean processes and streamline our different, um, processes. We're really trying to adopt some automation in our permit system and that will be really helpful as we move into next year. And then a couple of quick updates on the museum and the city hall. So the museum is under permit review right now. We're still hoping to be able to go up, excuse me, out for a contract bid on that in September and get that under construction this year and into next year. The civic campus, we're doing really good right now. We have, um, all of the floor plans, um, decided upon at least as far as who's sitting where. So now we're getting into the, the harder work of doing the mechanical and plumbing systems and really trying to deliver that project on time and in budget. Uh, good news to the council, so there was, um, a tagline in there about the Everett Water Line. We had, had a meeting, a sit-down meeting with Everett. Um, the staff report says that we haven't heard back from them, but as of today, we have heard back from them and we're, we have about three or four remaining items that we need to get to agreement on and we've already sent them back out comments this afternoon. And then as far as beautification, we have our banners ready to order. So you'll be seeing some both year-round banners and some seasonal banners that are gonna be on Main Street and Mills Spur and we'll bring those over to the new civic, uh, civic campus next year. And we do have our next volley of wayfinding signs also adopted. As you move into your packet, on page five of your packet, it has the permit numbers from the last quarter. I won't go over those. And there are also some notable, um, applications that are into the city as well as a code enforcement report. And I've already talked about some of the process improvements that we're working on. And then we've had an opportunity to get several staff trained as well as a couple of certifications for a couple of our staff members. So all good stuff has happened in the last few months and happy to take any questions or comments from the council. Very good.
I, I do have a question, um, as far as the seat locations, I know at one point there was discussion about hybrid, um, because we were doing some hybrid, um, work options due to the limited space in the existing location. Um, where are we at with that as terms of, of hybrid work option for the staff?
At the new campus?
Correct.
Yeah, the, that'll still be department by department, um, deciding, you know, who can work remotely, but we do have enough dedicated space for the staff that we have and we are building in hoteling spaces and some bullpen spaces to have a little bit more flexibility from work from home or working in the office. So that is part of the plan.
Thank you. And what, what's the timeline for the Everett Water Line, um, for those items that you, um, that are left to be accomplished? What, what, what do you believe is a reasonable timeline for that?
Well, I'm gonna be out of town for the first two weeks in September. So what Jean and I had talked about today was getting back to them mid-September. That'll give them three weeks to respond to three, three items, four items. And so hopefully after that, we can get something scheduled with the council in October and finally get this thing off of our plate.
Well, that would be an, an extraordinary accomplishment if we're able to do that, because that's, uh, um, yeah.
Director Wright, I'm curious, um, what you, what do you think the timeline might be for the, uh, PSH and transitional housing and shelter issue to come before council?
I'll, I'll let Dave answer that one.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's one of the items that we need to adopt by the end of the year. Um, and we've discussed bringing that before council, before we move forward with the Planning Commission public hearing. So it anticipates, uh, I know that a couple of the meeting, or at least one of the meetings in September is not occurring because of the retreat, but ideally we'd like to bring it forward to one of the September meetings, just so we could then move forward with the Planning Commission hearing, potentially in October and, uh, have the council public hearing by November, just so we don't push right up to the, to the. And uh have the council public hearing by November, just so we don't push right up to the to the end of the year.
Great, thank you very much.
Um, any other questions, Russ? Um, okay, um, thanks, Russ, appreciate your report. Um, it sparked something in my mind, uh, just to give council an update on Cavalero Park. Um, we um had a little hiccup in the wording of uh the Cavalero Park transfer. Um, that has since been verbally talked about, and I think that will come to uh some new paper. It's got to get approved by the county council and so it's got to go back to them. And then uh, but we're still scheduling, what were you thinking, Sarah?
It will also need to come back to our city council with the final language. We are hoping to do that next week. Um, and then we are anticipating a final close date of mid September, but we'll need to provide a a better date next week when we bring it back to you.
Yeah, okay, perfect. So there's a little update on Cavalero Park. Cool, let's go to Ms. Caitlin Weaver, let's talk about the retreat.
Good evening, council. We wanted to bring um some more solid information about our upcoming fall retreat um as well as a proposed draft agenda. So we will be meeting Saturday, September thirteenth um from around eight to four PM. We'll be meeting here at the mill and we'll be providing lunch. Um, and we do have the draft agenda within your packet documents. So if there's additional feedback um that like to discuss or provide to uh Council President Donahue, we wanted to give the that draft this evening to take a look at. It is very budget heavy, so we, most of those items are all tied into discussing the budget process, which I know was a big request.
I welcome your feedback.
Any questions about the retreat? Alright, cool. Alright, can I get a motion to pass the consent agenda? Remember that we took off uh D and put it on a discussion, right?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with item D, move to a discussion.
Second.
Uh, okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? If that, the consent agenda passes and let's go to uh ten D then and talk about um the intergovernmental services agreement between Snohomish County and the city. Lake Stevens for traffic controlled devices and streetlight maintenance.
Yeah, good evening, um council mayor, um I'm here, Shannon Front, the environmental programs manager for Erin Halverson, our public works director. Uh, this is an interlocal agreement with Snohomish County for maintenance of our traffic lights and uh streetlights. And in here, um this is for routine maintenance that happens annually. And then any kind of on call work order services that we contract with them to perform the work. Um, it was brought to my attention that in the agreement, there is some language about the cost for the services that. They will be charging us for labor and equipment, materials and processing clerical. You know, expenses and then also an administrative charge. And unfortunately, I don't have enough information to be able to describe why there's kind of a duplicate. It seems like there's potentially a duplicate cost in there. So that's something I can take back um to the county and bring it back to the council for further clarification.
Any questions for Shannon?
No, I just wanted to say that I was the one that took this off. Um, and the. To be uh specific, if you look at uh paragraph six, a base basis of payment, it lists everything that we're supposed to pay for in this. And then a few paragraphs later, it talks about adding a twenty percent administrative cost. So when you look at what it costs and the back sheets uh of where they list all the costs, the administrative cost is not in there. This actually raises that by nine thousand dollars or almost nine thousand dollars. So that's why I wanted to take it off of there, have this talked about, looked at. Uh, and I'm hoping that we don't find out that this is, you know, normal way of doing business with the county. But I it just kind of bothered me that we had a twenty percent administrative charge. They've already listed everything as charged. And it wasn't even a part of their calculations.
Okay, well, uh, we'll go back to the, we'll get some answers on it, bring them back. Great, thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Um, alright, let's go to a public hearing. Is Greg online, is Greg, are you online? Is Greg online?
Greg is online, yep.
Okay, we're going to go to public hearing on the gamble rezone, closed record public hearing. Um, Greg, would you just take a minute and um remind us um the rules on the closed record public hearing? For the council.
Did you have a good?
We got you.
Okay, alright, well, the primary uh things to to remember are that on a closed record, you're going to make your decision based upon the administrative record. It is the documents and the uh that have been presented to you in the record. Uh, interested parties who wish to speak tonight uh should address. In in making their comments, uh, address items in the hearing record. They should not bring up new information that they've discovered since the hearing examiner heard the matter. Uh, they should speak to items that are in the record to support whatever point that it is that uh they want to make to you. So that's the uh the important thing for both you and for those who wish to speak tonight uh to keep in mind.
Okay, Greg, I appreciate that. And so with that, David, you have the floor.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, Council, David Levitan, Principal Planner. Uh, so let me just, just go ahead and. So we are here tonight for a closed record public hearing for what is called the gamble rezone, uh land use application number twenty twenty four dash zero one eight six. Uh, so just a little bit of context on this, this is a property that's located uh on the south side of Machias Cut Off, just west of one twenty third, which is both the city and the UGA boundary. Uh, just a little bit about the application information, uh K and A Investment Holdings is the applicant and property owner. Uh, the property size is about six point two six acres and the proposal is to rezone the property from R six uh to RA twelve. So those are both uh historically primarily single family residential zoning designations, just with a slightly higher uh zoning density uh for RA twelve. The applicant has submitted uh concurrent applications uh for preliminary plat and height variance. Uh, those were approved by the hearing examiner on the same date that uh, well, they weren't approved that date. The public hearing for those were held the same day that the hearing examiner public hearing was held for the rezone. Uh, the hearing examiner uh issued conditional approval of those application contingent on council approval of this rezone proposal. Uh, so this was received back in September of twenty twenty four. Um, was both the notice of application and the notice of public hearing were issued as required uh by the Lake Stevens Municipal Code. Uh, the required public meeting was held back in November of twenty twenty four. Um, rezones are a type four land use application, so that involves a public hearing and recommendation from the hearing examiner before a public hearing. And decision is made by the city council. Um, and the hearing examiner public hearing was back on July fifteenth of twenty twenty five. Uh, so there is no proposed change to the land use designation. It would remain medium density residential, which is uh both the R six and RA twelve zones are implementing zoning districts of that designation. Uh, just looking at the surrounding properties, the properties to the north and west are uh zoned RA twelve, which is the proposed zoning. And the properties to the south are zoned R six, which is the existing zoning. Uh, all of the properties east of one twenty third or outside of the city in UGA. So they have uh basically rural residential and R five designations in the county, which uh is intended for minimum lot size of uh five acres. So rezone proposals are categorically categorically exempt from CIPA. Um, there was a CIPA mitigated determination of nonsignificance issued for the associated uh preliminary subdivision. Are you? Oh, no worries. Um, in evaluating rezone proposals, they need to be consistent with the approval criteria in Lake Stevens Municipal Code, section fourteen sixteen CO nine oh. Um, as mentioned, the hearing examiner held the public hearing back on July fifteenth. There was no oral testimony provided during the meeting. Uh, there were no written comments provided in advance of that public hearing. Uh, the hearing examiner did determine that it met the approval criteria and recommended approval, which is included as exhibit B to ordinance twelve oh one, which is in front of you this evening. Um, this is uh a little bit of a unique one in that it predated the adoption of the twenty forty four comprehensive plan, the twenty twenty four to twenty forty four comprehensive plan. So it was vested basically to the land use goals and policies and everything else of the previous comp plan, the twenty fifteen comp plan and the associated twenty thirty five. Growth targets that comes into effect a little bit in that um the previous growth targets as adopted in the twenty fifteen comp plan didn't have specific allocations for different income levels. Uh, as we move forward with rezone proposals in the future, part of our evaluation of consistency with the comp plan is will help us to meet our housing needs. That includes a specific income levels and for specific housing types. Um, this application was vested to the previous comp plan, so it didn't need to show consistency with those twenty forty four growth targets. So we uh did not incorporate an evaluation of how it meets income levels specifically. Um, so basically just needed to show that it helped to meet the twenty thirty five growth targets as included in the previous comp plan, which uh staff did determine. Um, in its recommendation to the hearing examiner that it did, and the hearing examiner ultimately ruled on that, that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan. So uh council is asked tonight to uh hold this closed record public hearing to um ask any questions of staff and then to uh adopt ordinance twelve oh one uh following the. Closure of the public hearing. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Really, questions for David?
Yeah, David, um, I just reading the hearing examiner's um findings, conclusions, recommendations. It talks about capacity with the exception of South Lake Stevens Road and South Davies Road, the road network serving the rezone has the capacity. It really doesn't talk about, I mean, how there's um level of service issues at South Lake Stevens and South Davies Road. So how how is that going to be handled? Other than the fact, I think it talks about uh. If I can find it real, applicant to contribute its proportional share to necessary improvements to bring the intersection up to acceptable level of service. At what point in time is that determined? Well, so that is being determined as part of the uh, well, the mitigated determination of nonsignificance was issued as part. Uh, of the preliminary subdivision review. Um, the way that the mitigation measures was established was that uh prior to basically building permit issuances issuance, uh there's going to be additional analysis and a determination of what the proportional share of the applicant is. Uh, since we issued that MDNS, there has been a little bit of a discrepancy with the traffic analysis that was included in the twenty twenty four comp plan. And it's uh what it had projected for that intersection, it was actually showing it still as LOSC, which is still acceptable uh per our comprehensive plan. It was showing that it would still operate at that acceptable level of service all the way out to twenty forty four. Whereas uh the traffic study showed that it would drop down below that level by twenty twenty seven. So we have instructed and asked the applicant to uh for their traffic consultant to work with the traffic consultant that worked on the comprehensive plan to try to. Figure out what happened there, why the discrepancy is there as far as the projected future level of service. So that's something we're continuing to do. Um, there are other projects down in that part of the city uh that would um depending on what the results of that analysis show, would potentially also be uh responsible for a proportional share. So we would be looking at what do we want to ultimately do with that intersection? And then consistent with uh constitutional case law, what would be a proportional share? And what would be the nexus between uh that responsibility and those improvements? So we're continuing to work that through as part of the actual project review as opposed to the rezone. Um, and we anticipate continuing to work through that uh through the final plat process and prior to building permanent issuance. Will there be another hearing on the plat process itself? There wouldn't be on the plat process because that is a type three application uh for the preliminary plat. And then it's a type two for the final plat, which doesn't require a public hearing. There will be other projects um that likely come down um where this might be an issue as well, depending on what their traffic analysis shows. And that's why we're trying to do a more comprehensive analysis of traffic impacts in the southeast portion of the city, just so we can determine, you know, um proportional shares and and how the city wants to handle traffic. Uh, that intersection and other parts of the city. So what is the public's uh avenue to uh. Address concerns about this particular intersection as well as probably South Lake Steven or East Lake Stevens Road and uh Machias Cut Off? Is there an opportunity for the public to comment? Specifically related as the impact specifically related to the impacts from this development or just in general? Both. Um, for this development, as far as the rezone, there there wouldn't be um, because ultimately this is the decision that's issued by the council unless there was uh some sort of appeal. Um, for the subdivision, the preliminary subdivision decision has already been issued by the hearing examiner. And as I mentioned, that the final plat would be a type two, there would be a public comment period, but there wouldn't be a public hearing uh specifically related to this project for the final plat. Um, for other projects, you know, that come in, um, you know, there are several several other pending projects that have uh indicated a potential impact on this intersection or at least trips that would go through this intersection. So there would, any of those that are type threes subdivisions or involve a rezone, um, there's uh a proposed rezone. Um, kind of just relatively close to here, um, a little bit west of here, actually closer to that intersection. That's likely going to need to do some level of traffic analysis uh for the South Davie, South Lake Stevens intersection. And that would be a another type four, which would have public hearings before both the hearing examiner and the city council. So there'd be opportunities at the hearing examiner public hearing to provide that testimony and those comments. And then anyone that becomes a party of record or party of interest could speak to that at the council public hearing. I uh, as happened so many times, the improvements happen after the impacts. And I would, I would hope that we're thoughtful enough to get the improvements done before the impacts. Because the the South Lake Stevens Davies Road intersection is a problem right now. Um. And as you indicated, with the number of projects coming forth, um. I I hope we can take a proactive approach and get this resolved before we have the impacts take place. Yeah, and we're trying to identify those. And I would say, just as it relates to this specific rezone proposal, that rezones are exempt from CIPA. So that sort of limits some of our substantive authority for per concurrency and rezones are actually identified as exempt from transportation concurrency. So the plan is generally to evaluate those more at the project level as opposed to the land use action level. Okay, thank you.
So David, um, I don't have quite the macro view that Councilmember Peter Sagin has. Uh, but going through this and keeping in mind that I'm limited to this record, what I have in front of me is there is an intersection that's going to be impacted by this. And it's currently operating at a level of service F. I'm assuming that's A through F standard, you know, grade school grading scale, is that correct? F is bad?
Generally, yeah, yeah, F is bad.
Okay. So I I guess my issue is in reading this, um, I'm not sure that I agree with the finding that there are no adverse impacts. If we've already got an intersection according to this record that's operating at such a substandard level. And we're going to pile on to that. And I look at some of the ensuing conclusions of law that are based on that finding of fact. Um, let me scroll down here. So i- it's a little confusing because the hearing examiner broke the findings of fact into five A, B and C. And then in the conclusions, there are several that just reference finding a fact number five. They don't specify A, B or C. But the one I'm looking at is a dot oh nine oh G seven, adequate public facilities and services are likely to be available to serve the development allowed by the proposed zone. And it says the criterion is met for the reasons identified in finding a fact number five. So if I'm looking at that, if I've got an intersection operating at level of service. So if I'm looking at that, if I've got an intersection operating at level of service F, and I'm saying I'm going to make that worse, even a little bit worse, I, I don't see how that's not an adverse impact. Can you help me with that?
Yeah, I mean, so the, the major issue is distinguishing between the rezone and the actual project, the subdivision. So we are limited in the, there wasn't even a CIPA, there's no CIPA threshold determination related to the rezone because it is categorically exempt under the WAC. So there was some incorporation because the hearings happened back to back. The rezone public hearing was opened, it occurred, it was closed. And then these, because that was a type four land use application, then the subdivision and the height variance occurred just after that. And so I think the hearing examiner decision incorporated some of the analysis that was included with the preliminary subdivision application. And so there, we're in a situation where we need to rely on the CIPA process and the traffic analysis that was prepared for the preliminary subdivision. I totally understand, it's totally natural to be looking at that as part of the rezone, but we do need to tackle that. It's basically the MD, the MDNS, the mitigated determination of non-significance was established in a way that they need to demonstrate how, what their, we're basically going to establish what their proportional share is to bring that intersection, at least not to make it worse. And hopefully through this kind of coming together of the mind of traffic engineers, we're going to figure out why there's a discrepancy, why our comprehensive plan traffic analysis showed that it would continue to operate through LOSC all the way through 2044, whereas their traffic analysis showed it potentially failing by 2027, and that it's actually lower than LOSC now. And so that's something, I don't want it to seem like we're kicking the can down the road, but we are limited in the ways that we can evaluate traffic and transportation concurrency that we're basically required to evaluate that at the project level stage, which the preliminary subdivision has been, you know, contingently approved based on the results of this public hearing and the council's decision. But they can't make it all the way through final plat and building permit issuance without resolving this issue is how, I guess, how I would explain it.
So acknowledging that I understand maybe half of what you said. No, I guess where I'm still.
It's an eighth more than I got.
Yeah. Where I'm still hung up is, you know, the instructions from council are we are limited to this record. So while I appreciate from a practical standpoint, how things may be measured in the future and what measures may be taken, I feel like, and correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, if you can hear me, correct me if I'm wrong, I feel like my role here as a council member is look at what's in front of me and make my determination based on that. And what I've got in front of me seems to say an intersection is operating at a level F out of A through F, and we are going to add more to that. Even if it's the, even the rezone itself, I believe it was six to seven peak, you know, trips. I understand that that's not a lot, but when I look at it as this is an intersection that's, again, according to the report, already at F, I don't see how making that even just a little bit worse isn't an adverse impact. So Greg, if I see your face on the screen, if you want to chime in, or David, I leave it to you guys.
Well, I was just going to point out that, that this particular project is, will not be the cause of this intersection operating at a service level F. The hearing examiner basically found that the number of peak hour trips is pretty minimal. It's going to remain at F, but it wasn't a significant amount of additional traffic to require any, anything more than that it be responsible for paying a proportionate share, whatever that might happen to be for whatever traffic improvement the city decides to, to, to make at that particular intersection. You know, we, we hold developers responsible to pay for impacts that they cause, right? To, to whatever significant degree they cause an adverse impact, then we can hold them responsible for it. In this particular case, the, we're already there at F. It's not going to get that much worse by this particular project. And this developer will be responsible for contributing to whatever traffic solution the city decides to bring up the level of service at that particular intersection.
Okay, and sorry, I should have clarified this. So my, my thinking on this isn't related to how much the developer has to pay. I'm looking at this from a point of view of, do I, as a council member, approve any increase in zoning? Because based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like pretend hypothetically, this could be a situation of death by a thousand cuts. If we had 50 developers that all want to increase trips, you know, just by six or seven, how do I hold any one developer accountable and say, request denied? We're in the totality, again, in the hypothetical, it, it sounds like that could add up to a meaningful thing. So I guess, how do I draw that distinction between, you know, the, the straw that breaks the camel's back versus the, the aggregate traffic flow there?
Well, I think, Dave, tell me if I'm not wrong here, but in, in, in the normal course, if, if we had situations, say we had 10 pending applications for that particular, particular that would cause increased traffic and in particular peak hour trips on a particular street or intersection, then I think that, that we would have to have some different, different solution than the one that was, the one that was selected here. Simply because an intersection is already at a failure rate, can we therefore prohibit any additional development that might cause any additional traffic at, at that intersection? I don't, I don't think we can because we can't hold the developer, in this case, responsible for the level of service F that already exists there. And the circumstances are, are such that for, for this intersection, that a traffic solution is going to have to be identified. And, and we do that through our traffic, not only through our traffic impact analysis, but through our CIP and, and our TIP. And we find a solution for that through those processes to, to council. Council member Peter Sagin asked the question, well, when does the public get to give their input with respect to whatever traffic improvement is going to be made at, at that location? Of course, that's the time normally that there would be public impact as you review what traffic solution needs to occur to be upgraded at that particular intersection. We put that into our plan and we base our assessments based on that. But it.
So one quick clarification, I, I mean, I, I'm not necessarily talking about holding of development. I'm, I, the, the property or the, the zoning is what it is. I'm, I'm just looking at, you know, can I, in good conscience with what I've got from me, sign off on an increase in that? And then again, you know, I, I appreciate the forward looking aspect of this, but if my role is to look at what's in the record, I guess, I, I don't know that I'm allowed to nor comfortable, you know, making the decision based on what might happen. You know, it seems like I'm limited to what's in front of me in the record. Isn't that the case?
Well, of course, the, the, the question, the question is, as far as conscious is, does this particular, would the approval of this particular zoning change? And would, would that cause an adverse impact that would justify overturning the hearing examiner's decision? That's really the question. It's not a question of consciousness to whether you should vote for something that might add some additional traffic to this, to this intersection. If, if it's not adding a new adverse impact to this, to this intersection that can't be taken care of by the condition of approval, that's another thing. But, but it appears that the conditions of approval for this particular change have dealt with that level of F service at that particular location.
Well, I guess that's the question, you know, it's, I'm looking, the hearing examiner's conclusion was that, that was not an adverse impact. You know, and there's, there's a traffic study referenced in here as Exhibit 3D. I, I can't seem to find that. So I can't look at the underlying study myself, but I, I guess that's where I'm not sure I agree with the hearing examiner. If the, if the intersection, it's such a poor level, I'm not, I'm saying that might, in my mind, be an adverse impact that violates one of the code provisions. And that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Okay.
Maybe I can take a, a quick stab at this. So what we've been talking about are system improvements versus project improvements. So the intersection there is what we would call a system improvement. It has a, an identified need. And so as mentioned by the city attorney, that should be added to our capital facilities plan. It's currently not in there. It will be added. And there are not just one, but there are several opposing traffic studies. So, you know, that's not part of this record, so it's not part of your consideration. But as the, the hearing examiner goes through, again, he's looking at our adopted municipal code, state law and, and case law that help guide, which in this case are municipal code and, and state code, you know, says that rezones aren't subject to looking at a, a concurrency analysis, and that's for traffic. And as Dave has alluded to, that comes in at the project. So when we use the term adverse effect, that's going to mean some different things. So in the world of a land use planner, if you say adverse effect, my mind goes to a state environmental policy act determination, which would be a determination, again, at the land use action, the project action, not the non-project that we're sort of talking about changing the color on the map. And is it generally consistent? So at the project action, that's where we have the substantive authority through CIPA, which we have used and said, yeah, you have to deal with this, this issue. We don't consider it an adverse, a significant adverse impact because what we're talking about is a very few additional trips going to, as already alluded to, an intersection that may or may not be failing. And I'm going to say it that way because we have opposing reports that we're evaluating that show significantly different things that we're analyzing outside of this. So that's what we're really talking about is we have what's considered more or less a non-project action. It has set criteria. We go through it generally broad brush, 10,000, you know, foot level. Does it meet the comp plan, the basic goals and policies? And try to go through those findings of fact versus the other part of that is then when we go to the project review, we have more discretion, ministerial authority to condition it appropriately. In this case, it's conditioned to contribute to the proportional share of any traffic impacts that it creates. And if you follow our code, it's not just repairing it. It could be they limit the size of the development so they don't build two houses for five years. They, we go through an analysis to determine what is their proportionate share. So the implementation piece you're talking about, that's happening later. And so it is really separating two very distinct phases of a project, if, if you understand, not, not acting as an advocate, just trying to draw the distinction between where we're at on one part of the process versus the next process.
I, I think that makes sense. What I come back to, so I guess the first thing is, in terms of adverse impacts, again, I'm limited to the record I've got here. And the hearing examiner broke out traffic as a specific section under adverse impacts. So to me, the hearing examiner looked at traffic as a potential adverse impact. If my reading on that is wrong, I'm happy to be corrected. That's five A. And then I guess kind of, so, so jumping forward, ultimately for me, the decision or, or what I'm wondering is, do we need to come up with a way as a city to improve the intersection before we approve the rezone? Because as I understand it, I am not allowed to consider future improvements, things outside of this record. I have to look at what's in front of me. And what I have says failing intersection, going to make it a tiny bit worse.
So going to five, you know, where it says adverse impacts, the, the hearing examiner's condition says no adverse impacts are anticipated from the proposal. The main areas of concern for impacts due to the rezone or increased traffic impact to wetlands and effects of increased, increased density. So the, the hearing examiner identifies three concerns and then goes through those separately and then describes the, the conditions. But again, in the, the preamble to the finding, there are no adverse impacts anticipated. So that's where it gets into that, that project level analysis at a later date. Second part of your question, when does the improvement have to be done? It does not have to be done before the project is constructed. That is one option. Or they can pay a proportionate share into that, you know, commensurate with the number of trips, which in the case of, if you put it in, and, and I won't do it that way, but if you think about the total cost of the project, I won't put a number on it, but if you think of the total cost of the project versus what's being contributed here, it would be a very small financial contribution versus the, the cost of the, the project. So that's sort of the next phase of that. No, it doesn't have to be completed. There are other mitigation factors we are allowed to implement to make them concurrent at the, the subdivision level.
I guess I've taken up enough time, so I'll wrap it up and say, I understand your point legally, we're not allowed to compel or, you know, charge necessarily anybody ahead of time for money to improve the intersection. I guess I'm looking at just whoever it, I'm, I'm thinking of the city. Does the city need to improve it and then come back and we can approve a rezone? As far as I can tell, that's what I'm being tasked with is, is this an approve, is this something I can sign off on as it exists today, regardless of who's going to improve it in the future and when that's going to happen? And, and based on what I'm seeing in front of me, I don't think I agree with the hearing examiner that there is no adverse impact. So anybody else? Cause like I said, I've talked long enough.
So I, I guess I had a question for you, Ryan. So I'm, I'm looking through Lake Stevens municipal code 14.16C.090. My understanding of this type of action that I have to identify which elements of that code is being violated. In my review of that, I failed to see anything that the hearing examiner did not consider this embodied within that code that's cited for this particular project. So I'd, I'd love to hear your input on which element of, of that municipal code is being violated by the hearings examiner's decision.
So again, it, it's hard to determine how the hearing examiner mapped these because they only refer to finding a fact five. They don't go into the sub-levels. But if I had to pick the best one, I, I mean, I would say I could, I could probably make arguments for most of the ones that generically refer to finding a fact number five, but I'd say G seven, adequate public facilities. And I'm, I'm assuming public facilities includes roadways and intersections and services are likely to be available to serve the development allowed by the proposed zone. And if we've got an intersection that, again, if that falls under public facility and it's currently at, operating at a fail rate, level of service, it's a failure, and we're going to make that even a little bit worse, I don't find that adequate. So.
But I, I guess I didn't hear and answer the question, which part of that municipal code? I understand you disagree with the conclusions of the hearing examiner, but in, in reviewing the municipal code that's specifically cited, if I'm going to vote against it and correct me if I'm wrong, the last one, that I have to specifically identify which part of municipal code, the hearing examiner is in violation of. I mean, you were disagreeing with the conclusion of one of the points that he cites, but I, I don't, I want to understand what part of the code specifically that you're referencing.
That was the language of the code. That's LSMC 14 dot 16C dot zero nine zero subsection G seven, adequate public facilities and services are likely to be available to serve the development allowed by the proposed zone.
Yeah. Just, just, you, you've heard the staff report and then you've raised some questions on the basis of the staff report, probably before you have significant debate among yourselves as to whether to approve or not, not, not approve the, the, the action. Do you should ask for public comment and see what public comment there is before you kind of further on with this?
Can we do that?
Discussion.
I thought this was closed.
No, we're going to, we'll have a comment on it. So let's, let's, uh, let's go back onto the agenda. Is there any other comment, any other questions for David?
I had a question. And that's, I, I hear what Ryan's saying, but as I'm looking at the city's growth management act and the growth targets set, from my understanding, we are mandated to do, if at all possible, what legal responsibility do we have to approve more density when, if it fits within the criteria of code? Because I know there's been some changes when it comes to housing density. And so I'm just wondering, are we required to do this?
So we're required to evaluate the proposal against the approval.
So we're required to evaluate the proposal against the approval criteria in their recommendation to the hearing examiner. And then the hearing examiner makes a recommendation to the city council. So I think I maybe was a little bit too complex before. When it comes down to it, the difference between projects that are vested, that basically are subject to the 2015 comprehensive plan, is that we had a documented need for housing, but it wasn't broken out at specific housing types. It didn't say if it was single-family residential, multifamily residential townhome, townhouses. It didn't say if it needed to be affordable at 100% of area median income, or 60% or 30%. That's something that was passed through the legislature in 2021. So it applies to the 2024 comprehensive plan, but that didn't get adopted until after this project was submitted and vested. So they basically just needed to show that they were providing additional density that would be able to help the city meet its 2035 growth targets, which showed that we did need more housing. We did need more density beyond what was included prior to that. And so we were evaluating the project against that. Does it increase the number of units? They didn't have to specify the type of units or the income levels that it was affordable at. So that's what we evaluated the project against in 1416C090, as far as consistency with the comprehensive plan. So that was, went into that. So that's answering council member Shipman's question. And if I could just touch back on the traffic impacts, with the caveat being that really the rezone is exempt from transportation concurrency, that does factor in to the, to the specific approval criterion, the council member Donahue mentioned as far as infrastructure suitability, is that this project is specifically exempt from transportation concurrency. So that really shouldn't be being factored in, because it, the, just the rezone part, it can absolutely be considered as part of the preliminary subdivision. That's why the SEPA mitigated determination of nonseniorcy was issued. I think the hearing examiner's recommendation maybe blended the two applications a little bit too much. It kind of covered both the rezone components and some of the preliminary subdivision components. I understand we can't really be introducing new things to the record. I'm just trying to provide a little bit of context on what's already included within the record, that a lot of this refers more to the project level as opposed to the non-project level.
Any other questions for David? All right, hearing done. I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor to public comments, just public comments on this subject only. This public hearing, is there any public comments online?
If anyone online would like to provide public comments on this closed record hearing, please raise your digital hand, and I'll bring you in to speak to council. I see that.
And is there anybody in person who wants to pray? Go ahead, Ryan. Did, was Peter at the wrong meeting, different counsel?
No.
Oh.
He was trying to run for office here. He was staying for the other item, but he had to leave. So.
Ryan Larson, with Land Pro Group, I was the applicant representative for the project. Thanks for having, hearing the rezone tonight. I'm a former planning director. So I've been a planning director for 10 years in two different organizations. I was a, worked for Snoomish County. I've been in the government sector for 10 years. Now I'm back in the private sector. So I'm in the private sector. I've also was a former council member. My most difficult, difficult job you have right now is distinguishing, distinguishing between a land use application and a proposed rezone. And there's an A, and there's a B, and the hearing examiner blended the two together in their decision, which is unfortunate. Your decision should be solely based on the rezone application and not blending the land use application with it. That's kind of what I hear is happening tonight. You're taking what the hearing examiner said, which he's talking about traffic impacts and all that stuff, which is not related to the rezone. It's more related to the subdivision application. And so just encouraging the council to separate the two applications. You've got a rezone application, which is what you're being asked to do. The hearing examiner's job was to approve, recommend and approve or approve the preliminary plat application subject to the rezone being approved tonight. So.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Anybody else? All right. All right. I'll go ahead and close public comments portion of this. We, any other additional, David, any?
No, I'm happy to answer any questions as, as the council deliberates and discusses.
Any final questions for David before I open the floor to debate and discussion?
I have a question for Greg, if he's still online.
I'm here.
Okay, so I will start by saying I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the business side of this. And I fully appreciate the comment we just received. Am I allowed to consider that? Because what I have in front of me in the record is a recommendation, and it's talking exclusively about the rezone application, LUAT2024-0186. So let's assume, let's take the argument that the hearing examiner made a mistake. Can I say, oh, this clearly should have been split into two things, and I shouldn't consider these things? Or am I bound to look at what the recommendation is in front of me and decide on that?
Well, you need to look at the recommendation and the observation is, is correct. Whether you approve this or not is based upon the criteria for approving a site-specific reason. And if you're going to deny approval, then you're going to have to cite what objective of the site-specific rezone process has not been met. Specific things that in terms of the decision-making process that the, that the hearing examiner went through, that's not what you're approving, which, what you're approving in the end is the recommendation with the conditions. And as the recommendation with the conditions meet the criteria for a site-specific reason. So the, the observation that was just made, that there's a difference between a, a rezone and a, and a development project, actually put houses to actually put buildings and to know exactly how much traffic is, is, is coming are two different things.
So I am to disregard the impact of traffic despite?
You, you don't have to disregard it. The question is, is that a factor that would disqualify approval of this application? That's the question. Is, is, is that a factor that would, you could use to say this application doesn't meet the criteria for approval? That's, that's the issue that's before.
What's the answer?
The, the answer's gonna be in your vote. What else we got?
Okay. Greg, is it possible that the rezone could be approved and the preliminary plat not approved?
Let's see. Let me look at his decision here.
This is a combined application. And the, I mean, the difficulty we're having is regarding the conditions on the preliminary plat.
Yeah. Must obtain approval prior to approval of the subdivision by, by, by God. Well, neither the, the. No, I don't think the way this came to you, you have to decide it the way it came to you. You can't separate it in your decision. You have to look at this examiner's decision and decide whether it's correct.
Any other discussion?
I, I have a clarifying question about what he just said. So the recommendation from the hearing examiner states, it is recommended that the city council approve the rezone application.
Right.
As depicted in Exhibit 3A. So to me, that says all we are approving is the rezone application, not the plat application. But it seems like Greg just said, we're approving both or neither?
Rezone application. You're approving the rezone application subject to the three conditions.
If I could jump in, the preliminary subdivision was contingently approved. So if the rezone is denied by the council, if they don't accept the hearing examiner's, examiner's recommendation on the rezone, the preliminary subdivision approval would basically go away, because it was based off of that RA12 zoning, which then wouldn't exist. It was a contingent approval from the hearing examiner that is contingent on the city council approving her recommendation.
Is the opposite true, though? If we do approve the rezone, does that mean we automatically are approving the plat application?
Yeah, I mean, the way that it's structured, the preliminary plat has been contingently approved.
Approved.
The only thing approved, the only thing that's holding it up is council approval of the rezone. It's basically, you approve the rezone, and then the hearing examiner decision on the preliminary becomes effective.
Thank you.
Right. Yeah. So Dave, they've, they've already approved the preliminary subdivision.
Correct.
Subject to the, the reason. And, and really, this traffic consideration was, has, has been discussed as really a more a matter of the plat approval than it is the reason. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah. It's, that's something that was incorporated into the SEPA threshold determination for the subdivision. And it really needs to be focused on the subdivision just because the rezone is, is technically exempt from transportation concurrency.
Right. Because the rezone looks at what, what is the use to, is going to be made use of the land, and not the, the actual development on the property. That's.
Sorry. Is there any avenue to approve the rezone and not approve the plat as submitted? The plat application?
No.
That's not, that's not an option.
No.
Have in front of us.
It's a type, the, the plat is a type three land use application. The final decision on that is made by the hearing examiner.
So, so if the council does not approve this ordinance tonight, does it go back to the hearing examiner? If, if it's reapplied for?
The applicant would have to revise their application. It will be consistent with an R6.
Okay. And then does it go back to the hearing examiner?
Yeah.
Is the intersection on the calendar anywhere in the city to be improved? In other words, is it slated for?
It's not on the city.
It's not.
It's not. It's not.
So it's gonna be in F for a while.
Yeah. And just as a reminder, I mean, we are trying to determine kind of what happened between the conflicting traffic reports. I know, I would also notice as was included in kind of the narrative and the discussion, this, the approving the rezone would potentially increase the unit count by six units. At about one PM peak hour trip per unit, you're looking at six PMPR trips. If you look at the traffic study for the, if you were to be evaluating transportation concurrency, and you were to look at that traffic impact study for the subdivision, it showed that 10% of the trips would go through this intersection. So we're talking about 0.6 PMP carat trips. So that's obviously that 0.6 is bigger than zero, but it's a lot less than most numbers.
What is the total number of units? You're saying it's going to increase?
Seven units.
Seventy?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven total units to be added with.
No, I mean of the project.
Thirty-nine. So it went from 32 to 39. So it'd be seven peak hour trips more than under the R6 zoning. And then if you look at the actual trip distribution in the traffic study, it's anticipating that 10% of those trips would go through this intersection. So that net delta, that delta of seven PMP carat trips, only 10% of that, of those seven trips would go through this intersection. So it would impact that intersection by 0.7 additional trips.
Okay.
In one hour.
What other questions are, what other debate do we have or discussion?
Just make comment. I, I, I just don't see that less than one peak hour trip merits like seven, you know, limiting seven housing units when our city is already in a housing deficit and our, you know, housing costs are skyrocketing, because we have limited supply.
But you don't see it because it's not in the record. And I understand six, seven, you know, it's not a lot. But I hear a lot of great reasons that would change the way I think about this if they were in the record.
Yeah. Okay. So with that, let's move, can we get a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1201, an ordinance of the city of Lake Stevens amending the zoning for approximately 6.2 acre located at 12210 Machias cutoff from R6 to R812.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve ordinance number 1201 and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing not called for the door. Let's go ahead and let's do a roll call vote. Vote on it.
Councilmember Hilt.
Yes.
Okay, councilmember Ewing.
Yes.
Councilmember Joystad.
Yes.
Councilmember Shipman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peter Sagan.
Yes.
Councilmember Dotree.
Yes.
Councilmember Donahue.
No.
Okay, motion passes. Great debate, great discussion, and.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is, since we have this level of service F, which is gridlock, essentially a non-functioning intersection, is there any way that we can propose that there will be no other subdivisions that impact this intersection until a remedy is in place?
Well.
So I fear that we're going to continue to do this.
Yeah.
And it just goes on and on. And at what point in time do we say, we need to fix this in order for other impacts to take place?
Yeah. Well, you need, you need to get this on your capital improvement program.
That being the case, I guess I would say then we can't allow any more impacts to this intersection. It's not on there. Silence.
Agreed.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, you know, at what point, again, we, you know, we, we allow this process to move forward, and then the, in addressing the impacts are much later. And in the meantime, everyone's impacted. At some point in time, we need to kind of take a little time out and get the situation resolved. I mean, this particular developer, he has no idea what the proportionate share is going to be. So he's marching down this road. I, you know, they don't know what it's gonna be. Yet we're allowing him to move forward, which is fine, but.
Agreed. All right, we'll work on getting that intersection on the CIP and work that out. All right, with that, let's move to the next agenda item, which is action item, Fagerley West Annexation 10% Petition. Jill, you are up.
All right. Okay, there's my screen. So good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Jill Needham, and we recently received an annexation direct petition. I'll explain what that is in a second. It's the most common method of annexation. And so I'll get to that a little later in this presentation. Okay. So the address of this annexation is, it's just one property. It's located at 11726 20th Street Southeast. It's located just south of 20th Street Southeast, and in fact, just west of the previous Fagerley annexation. So if you're having a little bit of deja vu, we did have a Fagerley annexation that was in 2022. This property, it's roughly three acres. It's only owned by one person, two parcels, but it's one property in total. And the, the current residential land use is going to be medium density residential. And then the corresponding zoning is going to be R8-12. So I have a little bit of a refresher on the direct petition method for annexations, because it has been a little while since we've done one. So although it's kind of a process driven largely by the property owner, the city council will have discretion at each step. So the first step is going to be when the landowner or landowners initiate the petition to join the city. So to begin, the petition must have signatures from landowners representing at least 10% of the assessed value within the annex, within the proposed annexation area. So moving on to step two, next council would review that 10% petition, and then it adopts a resolution of intent to annex if they desire to proceed. So this is also the stage in which council can set conditions such as zoning pre-designation or the extension of utilities, though this won't be necessary in this case. um, though this won't be necessary in this case. So this resolution does not approve the annexation at this time, although you can think of it as essentially opening the door to the conversation. So after the resolution is passed, the petitioners then circulate a formal annexation petition at step three. So for this to be valid, um, it must be signed by the property owners representing at least 60% of the assessed value of the proposed annexation area. So moving on to step four, they would submit that completed formal petition back to the city and then council would then have time to review it and then hold a public hearing and then pass another resolution to accept the petition for annexation. So after that, at step five, it would go to this Snohomish County Boundary Review Board. Um, and that should be a pretty straightforward process. Um, and then the final step is where a council would move to adopt the annexation ordinance, um, if it is by, if it is approved by the BRB. And then after that, I would update the map after the established effective date. And so if you were wondering, we are right here at step two. So here's a little map of the existing zoning. Um, this area over here, this is the Figurley original development that was annexed in twenty twenty-two. Um, this is the subject property right here. This orange zoning kind of represents R eight dash twelve. And then this is an aerial image of the area around it. This is the Passidera Heights development that's largely surrounding it. It was built out in the late uh, two thousands. And then this development that's kind of in process right now is the Overlook Ridge Development. Um, and so this was the Figurley, um, original annexation in twenty twenty-two. Okay, so staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, um, which is attachment one in your packet. Um, this would accept the 10% petition and allow the applicant to then move forward and circulate a 60% petition for the annexation. So this would essentially kickstart the annexation process. Um, we would like some direction from city council as to whether we should explore expanding the boundaries of the annexation area to include any of the adjacent properties. Um, to utilize the 60% petition method, property owners representing at least 60% of the assessed value of the expanded area would again need to sign that petition. Um, so before you kind of discuss that question, are there any questions about this specific property or the general process for me?
I have a question for you, Jill. So this specific one, there's one owner. So they have to do a 10%. And then they have to do a 60%.
Correct.
In the meantime, they're incurring costs of whatever. Right? Is there a way for the council just to say annex it? Versus having this, this property owner go through all this expenses of process?
Like, can we bypass the 60%?
Yeah.
Wiring?
They own 100% of it. And so they're not like, they're, they're applying for it. They're not gonna say, no, I don't want it. You know, they're obviously applying for it, so.
So the, the annexation process is one of the ones, there, there are different ones included in the RCW, and this is the direct petition. And you have to go through these steps. You can't skip steps, even if you have 100, if it's a single property owner. No matter how many properties are included in there, you still have to initiate with the 10%, then move on to the 60%, go through the Boundary Review Board process and then do the ordinance to actually adopt the annexation.
I, I, I get all that, David, but it seems like we should be able to circumvent this process and save this citizen some money. And, and we did it when we annexed the east side of the, of the lake.
The word, the word can't sounds like a challenge to me.
Well, so that was a different annexation method. That was an interlocal agreement with Snohomish County that's allowed in specific circumstances. This is a direct petition.
No, I, I get that. So can we circumvent it? Circumvent it for this citizen, do a, do our own with the county, interlocals of the county and save this person some money for me. I, I, I'm just trying to make, make this go easier for this citizen. Like it just, the process is onerous.
It, it would be more onerous if we went through an interlocal agreement because then we're talking significant staff time and utilities and, but we can streamline the process. If, if council approves of this, they can start moving forward rapidly with their, their process. So.
I, I'm just trying to find a better way.
And I would just note that the, the applicant has been indicated that they've, you know, they've reached out to some of the adjacent property owners and there generally has not been interest. And so that, that was one of the questions from staff, but they've been proactive with that and seeing that, you know, it makes sense to try to bring in additional properties if possible, but we can't mandate that additional properties annex in. This is a direct petition.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question about your question yet? Or are you gonna wait? About that question, okay. Is that okay? What does explore mean in this question? What, what would exploring, expanding the boundaries mean?
Yeah, great question. So, um, if you look at the map and I can kind of go back here. Um, there are some properties that are still contiguous with the city boundary, um, and adjacent to the property that, um, could potentially be redeveloped in the future.
Does the plat of Pat, is it Passidera, the big plat that's to the south?
Correct.
Does that have non-protest agreements associated with that plat?
What is a non-protest agreement?
On, non-protest is a condition of, uh, receiving sewer or land use approval. The the developer of the plat has, uh, signed over the rights of annex, of annexation, automatic annexation.
So they, so the homeowners could not say no?
They could not protest.
Okay.
We had that same situation in some of the southeast, uh, annexation area where there were non-protest agreements.
Okay.
Were utilized to facilitate that annexation. And so when you talk about expanding the boundaries, if that, is it Passidera? Is that the name of the plat?
Yes.
That's a hundred and some odd lots. If there's non-protest agreements there, it would make sense to just automatically include that subdivision in, in, uh, the annexation process. And it wouldn't take, they wouldn't have to secure signatures or anything of that sort.
That's helpful. Thank you.
So do we know the question or the answer to that question?
First, do you know? Okay.
No, we don't. We'll look at the applicant and see if you'd like to pursue that or if they have that.
What, I don't, does the applicant pursue that? I mean, can't we just pull a chain of title and see? It's on the plat, right? So couldn't we do that for those folks and just yea or nay and move forward? Seems kinda easy.
So.
But those aren't the, those aren't the parcels that you were referencing when you were talking about expanding the annexation, correct? You weren't talking about Passidera. You're talking about the, the properties to the west.
Right.
Properties with frontage along twentieth would make more sense to bring in because they would be directly contiguous both to this proposed annexation and then just directly across the street from the city boundaries. Whereas as you drop further south, you're getting further away from the, the city boundaries. Um, and when, you know, the, the question is the applicant has had kind of preliminary, reached out preliminarily to them. It's something that staff could do that as well. It, it wouldn't guarantee that there would be a different result. It's just, would you like us to take any additional steps to try to expand the annexation area? Are you content that we have a property owner that's wanting to be annexed into the city and that we should just evaluate that annexation and keep the current proposed boundaries?
Thank you. That's helpful.
Well, if we were going to say that, yes, we want you to explore that, then we would add, I would add that, uh, what councilperson Peter Sagan is talking about, you add it to that too. I mean, why not? If it, if it has the non, protests, uh, non-protests and you know, add that, that if, I mean, we're not gonna have the non-protest to the left or to the west. And if, you know, and if, and the other thing of, of the comment is if he has already reached out, do we, do we think that the staff is gonna be any more successful?
Yeah, I mean, we, we wouldn't know unless we tried. And so the question was more geared to, would you like staff to take essentially another crack at this? And, you know, if, if there hasn't been any adjacent property owners rushing in to be annexed and they haven't indicated their they're committal to the process, would you like us to, you know, try to talk up the benefits of annexation into the city? Or, or are you comfortable that you do have a specific property owner that's wanting to annex, that you're wanting to keep the process as streamlined as possible? Or would you like us to try you know, to see, while still trying to streamline it as much as possible, if we were able to do it within you know, a very limited amount of time? And if the answer is no, we just continue to move forward with the 60% annexation. But if there were, you know, direction from the council like that, staff is happy to undertake those efforts.
So the actual decision is, do we wanna continue to go into our UGA?
Say that again?
The actual question is, do we wanna continue to go into our UGA right now based on what our budget is, et cetera, et cetera.
And, and I think that's a larger question that maybe we should have that conversation separately with council. What is your intention? Um, there hasn't been direction for us to pursue any additional annexations after the large one a couple of years ago. But I, I do think that's a workshop topic we can have with the council. Because as we talked about that Passidera neighborhood, you know, that sort of south part of the, the UGA is one we've really not looked at because there's I guess, uh, more of a cost to the city to take it on than there is to not. So that's been kind of the, the metric up to this point, but that is a more fundamental question with council that we should revisit. What remnants of our UGA do we want to take in, if any?
Are you looking for a motion at this point?
I am.
I would make a motion that we move forward or accept the 10% annexation. I would also direct staff to explore the possibility of expanding at a future date, the annexation process. Second, that particular area. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, Greg, um, we do not have an executive session tonight, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, alls in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Gary was second.